7:03. Hello, everybody, and thanks for joining. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. We're going to start out with, uh, um. Okay, I want to do this first. I want to start by taking a moment to remember our neighbor. After the tragic drowning of their six-year-old daughter Roxy in 2019, Doug Forbes and his wife Elena came before the Altadena Town Council to share information about the foundation they founded in her honor, the Meow Meow Foundation, and to increase awareness about water safety and the potential for drowning, particularly at summer camps. We were recently notified of the death, the untimely death of Roxy's mother, Elena, at the young age of 50. After a valiant fight against cancer, she passed away. I'd like to dedicate tonight's town council meeting in her memory and in honor of her daughter Roxy. So tonight, our meeting is in honor of Roxy and Elena Forbes. Our hearts are heavy and go out to the father and husband of Doug Forbes. I can't imagine the pain of losing your child and your wife. Please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, we're going to, that was very hard. That's a very hard thing. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the flag salute, and we're going to have Dorothy do our flag salute. Oh, I'm sorry, it was Dr. Thomas, Dr. Thomas.
Raise your hands over your hearts, please. And we'll say it together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move forward to our roll call. Councilmember Wong.
Hello, thank you, everyone. Let's do a roll call. Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Amy Lyford.
Here.
Thank you, Reginald Wilkins, council member. Councilmember Wilkins.
I don't see him.
Okay, um, councilmember Cauliflower.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Markison.
Here.
Thank you, councilmember Vega.
Here.
Thank you, councilmember Peck.
Here.
Thank you, councilmember Barber.
Here.
Thank you, councilmember Aranda.
Good evening, hello.
Hello, thank you. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Thank you, councilmember, Dr. Thomas.
Present.
Thank you, councilmember O'Malley. Hi, thank you. Councilmember Petrie.
Here.
Thank you, councilmember Wong is here. Councilmember Aronzen.
Here.
Thank you, councilmember Malone. Okay, so I think we're missing two people.
Okay. So we have a forum.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move right along. We need, um, item 1.3, to approve tonight's agenda. Councilmember Knapp.
The Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on March 8th to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated to council members on Friday, March 11th. I have received no changes. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? I think we should note the change that Dr. Thomas led the pledge, just as an edit.
Noted.
Any other changes? Hearing none, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, so the agenda is, um, move forward and carry it as presented with the one change. Okay, number two is our officers' report, and the first report comes from me. So I am the chair, and I have a chairperson's report. I want to first send our condolences to our own councilmember, councilmember Thomas, Dr. Sandra Thomas, for the sudden, untimely death of her sister. Councilmember Thomas, we will continue to keep you and your family in our thoughts and prayers. So we wanted to let you know that we all are praying and our thoughts are with you, and we're here for you.
Thank you, thank you so much, my good chair.
You're welcome. It has been almost two years ago, it will be two years ago next month, that we first met on Zoom. So we've been doing this two years. And last Sunday, this past Sunday, was the first time we were able to come together and see each other in person. Some of us had never even seen each other in person. So it's a bit different when you see someone in person, and on the screen they look six feet tall, and then when you see them, they're 4'10". It just makes a big difference. So we came together, we had a retreat. Um, we called it our retreat. We strategized on ways to keep moving forward and how to stay connected or be more connected with our community and our organizational partners. I want to thank all who participated, which was just about all of us. It was time well spent. I also want to mention March is Women's History Month, and I want to applaud all the contributions made by women in our United States and our local community and right here on our own town council. I applaud all the women on the town council tonight. And thank you, thank you all for your contributions to our community. Okay, now we will move forward with 2.2, the vice chair's report. Councilmember Knapp.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Good evening, fellow councilmembers and community. In honor of Women's History Month, I'm proud to report that on February 24th, 2022, the Pasadena Unified School District Board of Education unanimously approved Resolution 2647, changing the name of Washington Steam Multilingual Academy to Octavia E. Butler Magnet. Ms. Butler was born and raised in Pasadena and lived for some time in Altadena. She was an alumna of Washington Steam Multilingual Academy, which in her day was called Washington Middle School. She became a renowned science fiction author and was a recipient of highest honors in the field of science fiction writing, including multiple Hugo and Nebula Awards, as well as the MacArthur Fellowship Prize. The resolution reads, quote, "Whereas Octavia E. Butler is a role model for our students as she exemplifies the qualities of a graduate of the Pasadena Unified School District as presented by the PUSD graduate profile. Coming from a meager background, she persisted through struggling with a learning disability to model of excellence, using skills such as creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, self-discipline, research, goal-setting, and resilience. Now, therefore, be it resolved that in appreciation toward Octavia E. Butler for her outstanding achievements in literary science fiction and representing the qualities of a PUSD graduate that will inspire our youth and greater community, Washington Middle School shall be known henceforth as the Octavia E. Butler Magnet." Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to 2.3. Our recording secretary, Nick Aronzen. Did I get it right, Nick?
You got it right. Good evening, councilmembers. Last week, you received the minutes from our February 15th, 2022 meeting. I received no changes or alterations. Unless there are some this evening, I motion that we accept the minutes as delivered.
Second.
Second, okay. Are there any, um, objections? No objections, okay. Are there any abstentions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. I'm going to get it right one day. Keep it up, watch. Okay, we're going to move on and, um, we have our treasures report. Councilmember O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the period between January 28th and February 24th, we started the statement with $1,897.16. We have had zero deposits or withdrawals, and we end the period with $1,897.16.
Thank you for that. Okay, 2.5, corresponding secretary, councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Just to give everyone an update on March events as we start gathering more. There's a lot more events starting to happen. So I just wanted to highlight some fun things going on, which will also probably be mentioned at our library report. But composting 101 will be March 19th at the Bob Lucas Library. Um, and then LA County Assessors on March 23rd. This is all on the Altadena Town Council website. Uh, will be, LA County will be coming together to talk about ADU resources. So it's an ADU resource seminar on March 23rd at 12:00 noon. On March 23rd is PUSD. We'll be talking about this more. Women's History Month celebration. Um, and the Coffee Gallery is full speed ahead. I think there's concerts every single night. So check out the Coffee Gallery. And then Akona on 3/22 will be talking about the history of Altadena with Michelle Zach and what the Altadena Town Council does for our community. And Chair Jones will be presenting that. So lots of other things going on. You'll hear about them at the meeting tonight. So if you have anything you would like to list, you can list it on our website. Just email me dorothy.wong@altidinatowncouncil.org, and you can find that on the calendar link on our website. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want Dorothy to share with us. She told me we had 20,000 visitors to our website during the... Can you share that with us, Dorothy?
Oh, well, during the time of emergency in our community, so some has been the Bobcat Fire and also, um, you know, throughout COVID, we've had more of our community members reaching out to the website to find resources and information. So that's like, um, you know, exponentially higher at that time. And now we've been getting a good, steady stream, perhaps thanks to the great work of councilmember Aronzen too with Communications Committee and all of us together, just really getting out there more. We've seen definitely an increase in visitors to our website.
Yes, thank you. I just think 20,000 is impressive. So I just wanted to put that out there. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we're going to move on to our public safety reports, and we have the California Highway Patrol Officer... Oh, I see Officer Bay.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
For doing it tonight, thank you.
I am. Hope everyone's having a fantastic evening. So the CHP would like to report for the month of February, we had 21 total traffic collisions in Altadena area, all of those regarding or with injury. Um, and councilmember Knapp actually responded to us saying that one of those traffic collisions involved a student at the Elliott Arts Magnet School. So with the coordination with councilmember Knapp and with Elliott. So we actually were out there and the following day to make sure that we enforce a good pedestrian safety and just a good overall presence of CHP and the LA Sheriff's Department. So I personally like to patrol around, um, the Altadena Arts Magnet area in the morning times. But now I'm going to be switching up to the afternoon times as well, and I can actually go over and monitor the Elliott Arts Magnet School as well. Um, another thing is, spring break is this month. So myself and Officer Keller are going to be, um, trying to understand every single school's spring break schedule and going on from there. So we're going to be busy with that. We'll be meeting with hopefully some administration members and kind of hearing their chief complaints. And I just want to, you know, public safety tip. So in the month of March in Southern California, the temperature tends to fluctuate. So in the morning times, it's very, very cold. And in the evening time, it kind of warms up. So just make sure you're monitoring your traffic, or sorry, your tire pressure, just so that you're within the correct specifications. And, um, yeah, that's basically it. Are there any questions?
Victoria.
I just wanted to extend my thank you on behalf of the Dr. Sheckel at Altadena and at Elliott for both your and the Sheriff's Department surveilling the drop-off at both schools. It was abundantly helpful to have officers stationed along Lake at Boston, preventing cars from making the wrong turn that way and not being able to come out of the car line correctly. So we are so, so, so appreciative. I also wanted to let you know that the plan is now underway to move the buses that were on Almolino for Altadena Arts Magnet that push everybody out into the oncoming traffic. Those buses are in the process of being moved to Calaveras, and we will not have the backup that we have on Almolino.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I normally see. I position myself so I'm facing westbound on Calaveras so I get the full picture of everything. I do see a big line of cars, so.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Am I missing anybody because there's two screens? Okay, I think we can... Thank you, Officer Bay. I think we can move on. Thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, so we have Altadena Sheriff's Station. Captain Williams.
Hello, how's everybody doing? Everybody's fine. Uh, so I'll just start off real fast with a few stats. Our violent crime stats are actually down for Altadena about 60%, which is pretty good. Uh, our property crimes in total are down 18%. However, thefts from vehicles continue to be an issue. We do see a slight, dramatic increase in vehicle theft. So just want to remind people to be vigilant and keep their doors and windows locked and don't have their valuables out in plain view. Of course, a lot of those vehicle incidents are catalytic converter thefts. So we're going to continue to do things to kind of combat these type of issues. We'll have more deputies doing patrol in certain areas at certain times and try to get more resources in to help us out because we are kind of spread thin here at the station. Uh, however, moving forward with the increase in gas, we're hearing county-wide, maybe statewide, that there's an increase in gas death, where people are actually going to gas stations and stealing the gas from the station and are even poking holes in people's tanks and making sure that they get the gas that way. So we haven't had any reports here in Altadena that I know of so far. But I do want to just spread the word that we do expect this to increase. And maybe you guys can spread the word or spread it out to everybody. If they do come across this or if it does happen to them, don't just let it go. Report it so we can keep track of it and try to do things to mitigate that issue. Also, with the weather getting better, we're going to have more people on hiking trails and people park their cars. And that's when people leave their things in the cars, and that's a good opportunity for people to come and break into the car. So just keep that in mind for people that go hiking. Try not to have as many valuables with you. And if you do, put them away where people can't see them. So, community events are coming up in all of Altadena and, of course, at the station. There's a few, a couple of them I'll talk about now. Right now, everybody's getting ready for Baker to Vegas. It's the big run and Baker that goes to Vegas. And once that's all done, hopefully, if we do well, I'll be able to report something good to you guys. If you guys don't hear anything from me, then that means we probably didn't do very well. Anyway. But the next thing coming up, maybe hopefully in April 30th, is a prescription drug take-back day. We've already submitted our application to the DEA. We want to do things the right way. So we're waiting on them to get back with us, but they did indicate that they're going to try to send a DEA agent with us wherever we decide to have it. We haven't decided whether we're going to have it drive up and where people could just drop off their prescription pills and then keep going, or if they were going to get out the car. We're trying to figure that out. But once we do have everything said, a flyer will be made, and we'll make sure we get it out to everybody as soon as possible. Uh, also, the next thing is, also, I want to thank councilmember Knapp for bringing that to my attention. Very good idea. I want to have an open house. I understand it's been a while since we had one here at the station. I'm hoping for June, but, you know, it gets pretty busy in the summer here. So if I can't get it in before the concert in the parks, then it'd probably be right after that. I want to hurry up and get it in before school starts again. So I'll be on the lookout for that, where people can come to the station. We'll have food, gifts, music, just a nice little open house. So I'm looking forward to doing that again. Our Community Relations Department has been taken away from us due to budget cuts. But, uh, pretty soon I'm going to request that we get it back. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed. I don't cross my fingers very well, but hopefully we'll get that Community Relations Department back. But in the meantime, there are some people that do really help us out. Those are our station volunteers and our reserves. So I'm just going to do a little bit of recruiting right now. We are looking to increase our station volunteers. They help us out tremendously. There's a lot of things we wouldn't be able to get done without our station volunteers. So we want to see if people are interested in doing that. They can certainly reach out to the station, and we'll have them fill out the application. There's some training involved, and there's some required hours that they have to keep monthly. But we really rely on our volunteers to help us out with some of these events that we want to do. The next thing, also, our reserves. We rely on them a lot. They kind of supplement the Sheriff's Department personnel. They are at-needed employees. You know, and it's almost volunteer, but, you know, I think they get paid a dollar a year or something like that. But they do go through the academy training. They work with the deputies, um, closely, and they carry a gun and all of that craziness. So they actually go out and do law enforcement. So we do rely on our reserves a lot. Matter of fact, I think nearly all of our mountain rescue team are reserves. Uh, the other thing is our Explorers program. We're hoping to wrap that back up. We don't have an Explorer program here due to lack of people that were interested. So we're going to make sure that we try to get that out again. And if we can get those Explorers, it's a very good program for young people, 17 and under. I believe 12 is the youngest. I may be wrong. But if anybody's interested in any of those things, our reserves, volunteers, or the Explorers, they can call and speak to Deputy Hardison. We call him Sly. He prefers to be called Sly. And that's at the station at 626-798-1131. And the last thing I want to talk about is our Community Advisory Committee. We're going to start that back up again. We do have a meeting next week, Tuesday, I believe, at 6:00. And then once we get that all established, I'll be getting more information out because we want to get that bigger. They work very closely with the Sheriff's Department, you know, creating that collaboration between the community and law enforcement, which is greatly needed, especially nowadays. I believe that's all I have for today. If any questions, please let me know.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. Hi, Captain Williams.
Hi.
What's the age requirement for the volunteers?
Uh, there, I think it's 18 and above.
Okay, thank you.
To have to be an adult, that's it.
Any more, any other questions?
Oh, I do want to mention one more thing. There's a nice little picture out in front of my office of all of the council members. And, uh, there's like a lot of pictures that are missing. So if anybody's interested in submitting their pictures or updating their pictures, please submit them to the station. I think it's important that our deputies know who our council members are.
Yeah, and we'll take, go ahead, Diane. She's probably going to tell you how we do that. Go ahead.
I was going to say we should call Deb.
Yeah.
She, yeah, I think she took the other ones.
Yeah, she did. And when we go back in person, we'll have her there at the first meeting, taking pictures. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I was surprised at the news report that I saw. I believe it was in Pasadena, where they filmed these kids stealing a catalytic converter. And when the woman saw that they were messing with her car, she yelled at them, and they just reacted violently. And I basically, you know, go away till we finish. The problem is, it seems like it took less than a minute for them to get the job done. So, so is this what we're facing now?
Uh, yeah, sometimes it is like that. I don't know if the woman called 911, but we do hope that people do request police presence. 911 helps. That reminds me of an incident we had a couple of weeks ago, I believe, where there was someone trying to steal a catalytic converter here in Altadena, and the woman came out and confronted them. And it just so happened to be that they came to our etching event on, uh, in February. So the people, according to the victim, she says, she believes that they saw that it was etched. I'm not sure. And the fact remains that they didn't steal it for whatever reason. They went away. It could be because the woman came out and surprised. So that's kind of what I think. But maybe it has something to do with the etching. So sometimes they do go away.
That's encouraging.
Yeah. Okay, any more questions before we move on? And I just want to say, Captain Williams, my husband enjoyed the tri-tip sandwich.
Yeah, those tri-tip sandwiches were very good.
Yeah, he enjoyed it.
I enjoyed mine, too.
I enjoyed my three.
Okay, we're going to move on to LA County Fire. Marie Grecken.
Uh, good evening, council. I hope everybody is doing well. The stats for the month of February. In February, there were a total of 292 responses in Altadena. 235 of those were for medical calls, and we transported 179 patients. There were 13 traffic collisions that we responded to during the month, and two of them involved pedestrians and one involved a person trapped. We did have five fires during the month. A couple of small, little fires. One pole fire, which is a power pole. We had a small brush fire on February 20th near the Cobb Estates. So a little bit to the west of that. It ended up being about 2.2 acres. It was entirely in the forest. Initially, when that fire happened, I did contact the council. Um, and... Um, and we had set up structure protection. There were some homes that were in the path of that fire, but not immediately threatened. But to be safe, they went ahead and set up some structure protection for those homes until they could get that fire a little better under control. Um, luckily, it didn't go very far. It, they held it to the two acres. And um, as soon as we were able to break down all that structure protection, we turned the incident back over to uh Angeles National Forest. And and um, they managed it from from there. Uh, and that's about it as far as the report goes, unless there's any questions.
Victoria, she has a question.
I just wanted to thank you, Maria, for both the very quick uh communication with council regarding the fire. And the very quick response of fire personnel. There were so much, so much, there was so much air support so quickly. And it really um was a testament to how hard um our firefighters work. So we thank you and we thank them.
And I will pass that along to them. Thank you very much.
And um, Amy said the same thing in the chat. She put that in the chat to thank you also for that quick response.
I see. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, any anyone else? We're going to move on. Okay, we're going to go to special presentations. Okay, in the past, the town council has proclaimed March Red Cross Month in Altadena. So I have the proclamation and I'm doing it because Deb is not here to do it. So she asked me to do it and I'm going to read it. And uh, as long as no one has a problem with it, then I'm going to use my authority to claim March as Red Cross Month in Altadena. So it goes like this. In times of crisis, people in Altadena co- come together to care for enough for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. In the greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys, the contribution of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. Their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who can continue to advance the noble legacy legacy of American Red Cross founder Claire Barton. Who live by her words, you must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. We ask others to join us in this commitment to give back in our community. Now, if there's no um, no disagreement with this. I'm going to now there there now therefore I Veronica Jones, Altadena Town Council Chair of Altadena, California. California by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Los Angeles County and California. Do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Altadena to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. In witness thereof, I have here on to set my hand this fifteenth day of March in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-two. And of the Altadena, California. So, and I will sign that and that'll go in our files. Is is that in agreement with everybody? Yes, okay. Okay, and I wanted to say we have Mercedes here now. Um, Mercedes, we will invite you back next month to say the flag salute. Okay? But thank you for showing up and but next month, we will have you back again, okay?
Okay.
All right, okay. Okay, so um.
Chair Jones, may I ask a question or should I make a comment?
Who's that?
This is Amy, Amy Leifert.
Oh, okay, I can't see you. Okay, go ahead, Amy.
I just wanted to say I really appreciate you um focusing us on the work of the American Red Cross. Um, I've been a platelet donor for a number of years and I I know that um. It's really important for us to not lose sight of the fact that our healthy bodies can really help other bodies that are not as lucky as we are with our health and well-being. Um, and platelet donation is a, it's it's not as quite as easy or simple as regular blood donation. But it's really important for those who struggle with immune deficiencies and particularly patients who have cancer. So I want to encourage our community and council members to consider um donating platelets or blood as you can. Um, and I just really appreciate that that we've made this commitment um for our community. Thank you, Chair Jones.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for that. Okay, okay, so um, we're going to move on. And we have now, we're going to have a special presentation by LA on the LA County Digital Divide. Is Selvin, right? Am I saying it right? Is he here? Yeah, there you are. Okay, I see you. Okay, Selvin Hollis from Internal Services Department of LA County.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the council members for this privilege of presenting some information to you that I hope you find beneficial. I'm Selvin Hollins. I am the Director of LA County's Internal Services Department. I'm going to share my screen and briefly go over some some interesting things that are taking place right now in the county of Los Angeles. Relative to accelerating digital equity. Get the PowerPoint. Always happens to me, okay. So in the county of Los Angeles, um, digital equity is a is a real priority for the Board of Supervisors. In Los Angeles County, we have three hundred and sixty-five thousand households that lack internet access. This is based on data from the US Census Bureau. The map you're looking at on screen shows the areas throughout the county. Uh, and the level of of households that lack internet access. The most impacted areas are the areas that you see in the burgundy or magenta color. Um, the highest density is in the Los Angeles, central Los Angeles area. Around these areas, you see a blue outline. And I just want to point that out because in the next couple of slides, you're going to see that blue outline. And you'll see some correlations as to um some profiles of the communities that are most impacted by the digital divide. I will emphasize that there are home households throughout Los Angeles County. That lack internet access, but the magenta areas or the burgundy areas are the most heavily impacted with twenty percent. Or more of the households in those census tracts lacking internet access. Now, if you recall, the blue outline shows where the highest concentration of households are that like digital access. This map shows, it it overlays it with the areas based off of annual household income. In Los Angeles County, the US Census data indicates there are approximately one point one million households. That earn less than fifty thousand dollars a year. And a household consists of three or four or more family members. As you can see, um, the lower income areas overlap with where a lot of the digital divide is occurring. This map reflects the predominant racial group. Um, again, if you overlay with the where the digital areas, digital wide areas are. The highest concentration is in the is in the core Los Angeles area. And the predominant racial groups in those areas are are heavily black and brown. Now, what I'm going to do now, um, because I'm sure you're interested in, well, what, tell me about Altadena. So I'm going to share with you an interactive map. That highlights where the digital divide occurs. This is reflective of the maps that I just showed you, the static maps. But on this map, we're able to enter addresses, areas, you name it, we can enter it and it will zoom to those areas. So I'm going to type in Altadena. And the maps will zoom into Altadena. So in Altadena, if you look at uh, I think this is what Lincoln Avenue. This is Lake Avenue, so that gives you a perspective of the areas we're talking about.
Mr. Hollins?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not seeing the map. I'm just seeing the slide that says interactive map.
Okay, let me pull this up. How about, let's go with this. How about now?
Better.
All right, so let me zoom out a little bit real quick. So this is the same map as the static maps that I just showed. Okay, where we show the different areas. This map allows us to input addresses, communities, cities, etc. So I had typed in Altadena and this allows us to zoom into Altadena. Okay, and so um, let me zoom out just a little bit. So as you can see in Altadena, actually, um, Altadena does not have any of the areas that are the most impacted. Where we talk about twenty percent or more of the households. But you can see that there are areas where a significant percentage of the households lack internet access. Now, we're able to zoom in and the boundaries um that you see here, uh, these are census tracts. So if you click on any census track, so I'll just click on this one. When you click on the census track, what pops up is a summary of that census track. And it tells that in that particular census track, we have over eighteen hundred households. Of those households, fourteen percent have no internet access. Um, actually, a hundred and nineteen of the households, it's estimated, don't have a computer. And that could be by choice, um, or in many cases, it could be, um, you know, sometimes affordability and other things. But it also tells the median household income in that area as well. With this map, we can click on any census track. And whatever, again, it is in that particular census track, it will tell us data as to um the level of internet connectivity. The household um that have lack internet, etc., and the median household income. Now, near Altadena, obviously, there is an area that is heavily impacted um by limited internet access. Um, the, again, the burgundy shows where twenty percent or more of the households lack internet access. Um, the map to the right is the median household income. And of course, red is where fifty percent, fifty, the households earn less than fifty thousand dollars a year annually. And then the predominant racial group is in the third map. But out to dinner in large, there are some areas, um, I would say this area here. Uh, where the arrow is, there's about fifteen to twenty percent of the households like internet access. And again, if we click on that census track, um, it it reflects more details about that. Okay, so I'm gonna zoom out of this real quick and continue. And I, and of course, I can answer questions um as necessary. I'm gonna, let me reshare my screen. Okay. So moving on. So in um November of last year, the Board of Supervisors approved this motion. And this motion is really to try to accelerate digital equity throughout the county and make major investments in that in that space. Um, they did designate my department, the Internal Service Department, as the lead department for this initiative. There are four primary directives within that motion. Um, the first is to um conduct a countywide promotion of the affordable, well, was the emergency broadband benefit. Which is now the Affordable Connectivity Program. And those are subsidy programs offered by the federal government that will help offset the cost of internet, monthly internet service. And the purchase of a computer, tablet, um, or handheld device. The second directive was for us to work with using our purchasing ability. With various internet service providers and telecommunications companies to try to negotiate better deals that can be extended to residential consumers. That will lower the price of their monthly internet service. The third directive is for our department to launch a community wireless network. And select communities that are most impacted by the digital divide. And that's where we will work through public-private partnerships to establish a sort of a mesh. Over an area of twelve thousand or more households to provide them with free internet access, high-speed, reliable internet access. And then the fourth is a study to see what the county can do to invest in more fiber to the premises or fiber to the home infrastructure. I will say that the Community Wireless Network Initiative actually um. He actually starts uh next week. So we will be sending out solicitations to private companies to get that off the ground. This screen just is just a quick summary of some of the things that have um been accomplished thus far. We do have to provide a quarterly re- report to the Board of Supervisors. Um, some of the actions have been completed. The countywide promotional campaign is partially completed. We did a three-week campaign for the emergency broadband benefit in December. Um, that was, that provided constituents with up to fifty dollars a month in subsidies for internet access. And up to one hundred dollars towards the purchase of a computer, laptop, top or tablet. That uh, the emergency broadband benefit expired at the end of December and it's been replaced by the Affordable Connectivity Program. So we're about to launch a big campaign to encourage people to apply for that. It did expand some eligibility requirements, but the monthly um subsidy for internet access dropped from fifty dollars to thirty dollars a month. Um, we will, in Los Angeles County, it's estimated there's about eight hundred and twenty-two thousand households that are eligible for that. Um, currently, there's about forty-five percent of that that actually have enrolled. So we want to really push the campaign to get this cre- increase awareness and get enrollment up to about seventy-five percent of eligible households. And the county is committing three million dollars for this promotional campaign. The uh, the other elements are ongoing, but we are doing our best to accelerate this as quickly as possible. And with that, in the interest of time, I'll I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Diane?
Um, yeah, I just had a quick question on how did the um, how was that information put out there? You know, we had like partway down on that last slide about that you'd done a solicitation. How how are you getting that information out to the masses?
For the solicitation of the uh, was it the Community Wireless Network or?
Yeah, the, on your last slide that you had up there, like partway down, it said you did a, an outreach, I think.
Okay, let's, let's do this. Let me, let me bring it back.
Sorry, I don't want to hold up everybody. I was just wondering how you got the information, what we should, maybe we should be looking for if there's more coming out that we can. Share with our, the other folks in Altadena. The um, a countrywide, a countywide um promotional campaign and subsidy programs. You said that's still ongoing, right?
Correct.
And so what should, should people be looking for something from you for that? I guess is what I'm saying, that we could be looking for.
Yes, absolutely.
Promote.
Yeah.
Yes, no, we we definitely appreciate that. What we did, um, we had, we did a three-week campaign and it was actually very successful. It increased the enrollments by forty-three percent compared to the prior month. It was a multi-language, multimedia initiative. Um, there is a progress report that tells how extensive it was. We utilized um community groups, um, other municipalities, um, you know, county departments, everybody we could to get the word out. The end, we used everything from television to radio to text messaging, um, to uh flyers, brochures, events as best we could. Covid did limit the ability to get out.
Yeah.
But now that Covid is is relaxing, we intend to have what we call digital navigators. And digital navigators, we're going to be um, um, setting up grant programs for community-based organizations. To hire people from the community to talk to people in the community. And they will do everything from knocking on doors to answering calls for for people that have questions or need assistance. And also, and this is one of the things we really want to do, is have a lot of community events where people, we can advertise and people can come there. And really take their time to to understand what this is all about, what the subsidy is, how to enroll, what the pros and cons are. to understand what this is all about, what the subsidy is, how to enroll, what the pros and cons are, and make sure it's right for them.
Yeah, I'm sure we'd all like to participate in that, so if you could just keep us in the loop, that'd be great.
Just forward me any information that we could get out, and I'd like you to come back maybe later in the year and tell us how much Altadena got out of that.
Oh, definitely. And I will say this. We have the ability to provide, uh, because there's call centers associated with this, so we embed um, telephone numbers and, and things where we can tell where people are responding from. So we could, we could have a special telephone number, and when people that are in Altadena are calling, we, we can give you that data so you can see the, the level of participation.
Great, thank you.
So, um, let us help you get the word out, and we're gonna, uh, move on really quick. Amy has a question, then Chris.
Yes.
And Peck, and Alan. Okay, so let's, um, let's start with Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Hollins. I'm really excited about this program. Um, I had a question. One of your, uh, elements on your last slide talked about public-private partnerships, and I wonder if and how with the rezoning around the housing element and the, you know, the new ADU like structural issues that are coming down from the state. If there's some way that we in Altadena and other communities could work to require or really ask new developers who are building affordable housing to incorporate um, really clear, um, internet service provisions and to, to, is there some way that we can move forward in that way so that as new housing stock comes into the community that we are constantly pushing the developers to move in this direction to narrow that divide, particularly when they're um, claiming to make affordable housing? So that's a question. The second thing is, I just would love to know how we on the council can help you do this work.
Oh, no. Absolutely, and, and I will come back, and I, I appreciate you reaching out to, to offer that support. Um, on your first question, there is a number of legislative actions that are in play right now to address just that. I will say that there is a, um, there's some corporate interest too, so there's both sides to that, but there, there is legislation pending to address just that. Another thing I would offer to you is the, uh, California Public Utilities Commission is releasing, um, a new grant program for different cities and, and government agencies, municipalities, et cetera, where they will give you up to five hundred thousand dollars to do a technical, um, technical assistance study to look at your community and, and, and it's, 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 they're having workshops starting in April. I can send that information to, to Madam Chair, and you're welcome to attend that. They will start receiving applications, I believe, in May. So that's a great opportunity if you're, that there's some particular things you wanna look at, and it's, it, they are, the state is allocating fifty million dollars a year. So this year, and I think each of the next, uh, three years for this, so you can apply this year, you can apply next year, and that may be an opportunity too, to get some of your, your particular interests, um, you know, studied and reviewed.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Chris? Councilman's Member O'Malley?
You're muted, Chris.
You'd think after two years, I would figure that out. Uh, first off, thank you, uh, Mr. Hollins, for all the work that you're doing. It's incredibly important, and, uh, we appreciate it here. Um, if you know offhand, you said there was three million dollars for outreach, yes? How much of that was spent in Altadena?
It's countywide. So our campaign with all of the broadcasting, radio, television, print media and all that, it was countywide. So um, we didn't look at any particular city. I mean, it was, it was everywhere, school districts, et cetera. So I don't, um, I think um, we can go back and look at zip codes and other things to try to see where we may have put, put it, but it was countywide.
That's probably better by email, but thank you very much.
Our next time you come, just focus on Altadena. And, because we'd like to know, so, okay. All right, Alan?
Um, my, my question is, is really kind of implicit in Diane and Chris's questions. And that is, it sounds like you've made a real full-court press going through every sort of media to make us aware of this. And I had no clue, I never heard anything about this. You know, uh, and, and, and I, I wonder how many of us have. And so we would be curious as to the avenues that you were using to get to Altadena. Because I, I, I questioned just how effective it, it, it's been. And maybe we could work together to come up some better channels.
And we have a communications committee who might be helpful with this.
Yeah, we, we can certainly use anybody you have. We, it was a very targeted campaign, because it was three weeks. We really went into the communities that were the most impacted, those on the map where I showed you the burgundy areas were. That's where a lot of the focus was. But I will say this, this is why we want digital navigators so that there's a physical presence. Because, like me, you know, there are more car commercials than anything else on television. But oftentimes, we don't pay attention to it until we need a car. And so for many people that have internet access or don't worry about it, it may have slipped right by. Um, and so we, we realize that, and that's where the digital navigators become extremely difficult. And that's where we're gonna use a large percentage of that funding to get people to contact people and be a presence, because if you're not, if, if, if it's a radio station you're not listening to, or paper you're not reading, or, you know, it was all over KTLA five, if you're not paying attention, you wouldn't, wouldn't know. Um, and so I, I do acknowledge that, and that's why we wanna raise the bar um, on how we go about it with, and this campaign is going to last several months. It's not a three week. So the first one was three weeks. This one that we're launching in the next two weeks is intended to go all the way to September.
Okay, on, on the flip side of this whole issue, I think it was fourteen percent of, uh, people in, in my census tract don't have, uh, internet service. But my question is, how much of that would be by choice? Because, because I also saw what the median income was in my census tract.
Yeah.
I, and, and I'm just curious, because throwing the raw numbers can have more than one meaning.
Okay, just to move this on, I'm, I'm just gonna make this one fact. We have a lot of seniors that don't want internet. So that is a factor. I have a lot of seniors that don't want internet. So that is a factor in there too. But we're gonna, um, move on just because of the time, and we're gonna thank you for coming, and we're gonna welcome you back. And we ask that you send any information. Nick, did I see your hand? Oh, okay, so we're gonna to, and I don't, I didn't mean to cut anybody off. I just wanna, uh, just be cautious of the time. But, um,
Chair Jones, Mr. Hollins, will you drop your email in the chat? That way, any of the council members can reach out to you directly.
Yeah, and if not, just ask me. I have it. Definitely, I have it. So.
Thank you.
And most speakers here, I have their emails, so if someone doesn't get it, I can email it to you. So, Dorothy, very quickly.
Sure, and then obviously, if there's anything we can share on our website, um, we have a website. We can add stuff to. Thank you.
Yes, okay. We can reach out to the churches. We have a long reach. So we can help you do your job. And I also saw someone, oh, is Robert Bennett with you? I see Robert Bennett. Oh, no, I just kept seeing him green to everything, so somehow I thought he was part of the presentation. Okay, all right, thank you. We're gonna move on. Thank you very much. That was very informative, and I have heard of the program. So thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the, um, to our own Altadena Library. Chris O'Malley, Councilmember O'Malley, can you give us a quick re- re-update?
Yes, it will be very quick, I promise. Um, I don't know, if I can figure out Zoom, hold on. There we go. Uh, so I do sit on the Altadena Library District Community Focus Group, which is a collection of people from around Altadena. Um, we get to put input into the vision for the Bob Lucas and the main library branch going forward, with grants, uh, measure C. Um, based on the feedback from the Community Focus Group, the design team pursued this particular layout here. As you can see, it adds a significant amount of space to the, the Bob Lucas branch, which was not originally planned, but again, it's in my census tract. I'm very excited about the prospect. Uh, they're adding, um, areas here for the literacy and for maybe like little, um, conference rooms and stuff like that. And here, they are planning to make this space, uh, especially for maybe the children of Altadena that is visible from the street, and that looks like this right here is their, their vision here. As you can see, the fronts here, these windows, if there's like a reading thing going on in there, you can see it. They're keeping the original building in the center, and then building the literacy branch off to the right. Uh, that's really about it. I'm gonna leave the rest to Ms. Winslow. And I, I'm excited about the project. If you have any concerns or comments, people out there in YouTube land, please email me at chris dot o'malley at altadena town council dot org, and I'll make sure that gets wherever it needs to go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman, Member O'Malley. Okay, we're gonna move on to our community reports. And following that library report, we have our Altadena Library Director, Nikki Winslow.
All right, can you guys see my screen? Good evening, uh, council members. Um, and I wanna reserve time if there is feedback or questions around the building projects. I know, um, we're doing our best to try to like outreach and collect as much feedback as possible. Thank you to Alan and Veronica and Chris, who are all on our Community Focus Group. Um, so I did wanna start out by pointing out that we're gonna have a Zoom virtual hall, uh, virtual town hall meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, from six to eight P M. Please spread the word. Um, I have a flyer that I will email to the Town Council so that you guys can forward it on to anyone in your email groups. We want as many people as possible, not just our regular library users, but also people that maybe don't even know the library is here, or don't come in for whatever reason. In addition to that, we've created a landing page, um, that's altadenalibrary.org. We're calling this our next chapter. Of course, we had to use a book font. Um, where people can go if they have questions around the special tax scheme that's coming, as well as what is Measure Z? What is a community facilities district? Um, et cetera, et cetera, as well as like, uh, we're gonna keep it updated with everything that's going on with the building projects. So this one landing page has like a plethora of resources for people, so if anyone asks you, you know, what's going on with the library, this is a really great resource to share with them as a starting place. Of course, you can always refer them to me, give them my email or my phone number. In addition to that, we're also collecting, um, information through a community survey. Um, as you can see, the, uh, bitly on the top is English, bitly on the bottom is Spanish. I'll share that in the chat. Again, I'll include that in my email to all of you. If you can forward that out, it's like a, it's about a fifteen-question survey about whether or not they use the libraries pre-pandemic, how often they did or not, and what the kinds of things they'd be looking for in these library buildings. We want to get as much feedback and information and data as possible before we continue down this path of, because like right now, as Chris mentioned, it's schematic design. Like, there's nothing nailed down, there's nothing set in stone. So again, we want as many people in the community to weigh in on these designs so that we can, you know, again, expand our reach into the community. So again, I will send an email to all of the Town Council members, so you can forward that out. And of course, as Veronica and Chris and everybody knows, I'm, I live on my email, so you can always refer people to me if they have questions. Um, so this, I just thought we would touch on a really quick, um, timeline. So right now, again, it's all about collecting information. So with the Bob Lucas, uh, Memorial Branch, we've been meeting with the Community Focus Group. We've had staff meetings, we're working on schematic design. Um, we did meet with the board and presented, uh, like this preliminary schematics to them on the twenty-eighth. But again, we're doing this town hall on March the twenty-ninth, so please spread the word. We're gonna incorporate that in as we're continuing to develop the design for the Bob Lucas branch simultaneously, because I don't have enough to do, obviously. Um, we're also working on the main library, um, you know, at the same time. And we're gonna be doing a town hall with the main library on May the tenth. I was gonna do a combined flyer, but I really do want to like focus on the Bob Lucas, bring in as many people as we can from the community on that. And then, of course, when I come in April, I'll share more information about that town hall with the main library. So again, the balls are rolling, and please help us continue to spread the word, because again, we wanna have as much community input as we possibly can. Is there any questions or feedback about that before I move on? No? Okay, good. All right. So really quickly, I'll touch on some of our, um, things going on. We're excited. We finally have a new office manager, which means I'm not having to do all of the finance and payroll anymore, so I just wanted to introduce Anna Villa Lobos. She started last Monday, and she's amazing, and I can finally breathe again, so that's exciting news. Um, we're in the process of selecting the two new poets laureate for the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four, um, term. We had eleven amazing poets apply. It really like blew people away, all of the people that put their names in. So the, I met with the, uh, previous poets laureate, there were like six or seven of them. They're a very invested group. Um, they're gonna be interviewing potential candidates on, um, April the second, and we're really looking forward to trying to publish another anthology in the next few years. Um, I think I've mentioned it before, but if you haven't seen the Altadena Poetry Review website, I would highly encourage it. They created that through the pandemic. We didn't, we weren't able to publish the last two years, but they've been able to like feature poets from not only our region, but from across the country and world, so check it out. It's altadena poetry review dot com. It's Women's History Month. Happy Women's History Month. Uh, we're also, we're partnering with the Altadena Chamber of Commerce to host, uh, the Zoom Women in Science Virtual Conversation on Thursday, March thirty-first, as well as a really cool art display that's at the library um, out on the main floor, as well as in the community room, um, and in the reading court. So if, uh, you'd like to come and take a look, that's gonna be featured through April fifteenth. And of course, we have, um, wheels on the website of recommended reading around women's history and many other things that we're offering. So Second Saturday's back. I was just there last weekend. We had a really cool Irish band. Um, April ninth, we're gonna have Las Chicas. I hope I get to see lots of you out there. Um, as well as, uh, we're still determining the band in May, but June eleventh is upstream and super popular. Would love to see you guys out there. And I'm very excited to announce that we were able to resurrect the Mount Lo Chamber Players Concert Brass Ensemble. We did one concert in the end of January twenty-twenty, and then the pandemic hit, and we weren't able to do these. It is honestly the most breathtaking thing I think I've attended at a library. We have such gifted and talented musicians in Altadena. It really blows my mind away. So if you're available, our next one is going to be March the twenty-seventh. We're actually going to do it outdoors for comfort levels with the musicians as well as people attending. So Sunday, March twenty-seventh at three P M. If you're available, I would highly recommend it. Like, honestly, it took my breath away a couple of years ago. As usual, we continue to have our virtual book clubs. And right now, through, um, February and March, we've been doing a quiet space, which is evening meditation virtually. Um, Amy Rutledge is an amazing meditation master, so, um, it's currently going on right now, by the way. Um, but you could attend next week. And we'll continue to work with her. These have been a really, um, popular and well-attended virtual program. And then we're also doing a program on March the twentieth, which is the Sunday Written in the Stars, a spring equinox astrological forecast, um, as well as many, many other events, as you know. And I'm probably almost out of time, so thank you to Dorothy for mentioning the Bob Lucas Community Compost Hub. We're gonna be doing a kickoff March the nineteenth. Diana is also gonna be doing a From the Garden program on March the twenty-sixth, so if you're interested in gardening, wanna come out and get your hands dirty. And then we're continuing our adult crafting at the Altaloma Park on Friday, March the eighteenth. Um, I'm sure you've seen the van. We go to farmer's market. We're gonna be doing a garden storytime at Arlington Gardens. They've been an amazing partner with us lately, as well as continuing to fill our free little libraries. If you have one, you want one, please reach out to me. Uh, we've been using donations from our friends at the library to fill those throughout the community, which I think is a really cool way to, uh, use our donations that we receive. Um, there's lots of children. Um, there's lots of children's programming going on, both in March and April. So if you visit altadenalibrary.org slash programs, you can see all of them. And March is poetry uh or puppetry month. So we've had some really great programs around puppetry. So check out the website if you're interested in that. And the shared landscapes are mapping teens Altadena Project, which Isabel Briggs presented to you last fall. Um, they extended its deadline for submissions through March twenty-second. So if you have any teens that would wanna um get involved, please let me know. And that's it. So hopefully I didn't go way over my time. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have. Seems like I haven't seen you guys in a while.
You did fine, Nikki.
Thank you.
Any questions? Questions? Going once, twice? Okay.
I'm just so thorough. Oh, my gosh, so thorough.
You are. You are. You give a lot of information.
Yeah, you guys all, you all need to take a nap now. Sorry.
No, but thank you.
So good to see all of you.
Good to see you. I'm glad you're feeling better, too.
Yeah, thank you. It was cold last week. It's not fun.
Okay, let's move on to Parks and Rec, Sam Estrada.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, so we have a lot of activity that's gonna be coming up in the next few actually months over in the Altadena Parks. So some of our upcoming programming that we have for the spring will be uh one of our major events that we're doing across uh L A County is our Spring Jubilee Easter event. And we'll be having that at Farnsworth Park on April, on Friday, April fifteenth from three P M to six P M. And at Loma Alta Park on April sixth, Saturday, April sixteenth from one to four P M. Uh, so just make sure that everybody comes out to enjoy, excuse me, comes out to enjoy a holiday character experience, arts and crafts, family games, egg hunts, and music and entertainment. So um again, that will be at Loma Alta Park and Farnsworth Parks. And um it should be an exciting time for all the families to come out since we kind of missed that last year. Also, something new that our department is expanding in is our 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 arts and culture programming. So we're actually bringing a Shakespeare in the Park um play that will be at Farnsworth Park on Saturday, April thirtieth. And it's gonna be a free play for the community. And we are actually partnering with Theater Americana. And they'll be putting on this wonderful play. And we'll be having more information for uh the council and the community in the coming weeks as uh we're continuing planning this wonderful play for the uh for the community. So we're pretty excited as this is uh something that we're uh our department is excited to offer that we haven't done uh in a while. So it's a welcoming welcoming time to um for the Altadena community to have this. So again, that's gonna be on Saturday, April thirtieth, and I'll have more information as we finalize all the details. Um, also, uh, one of our our major initiatives is also our sports program. And so we will be offering our softball and T-ball program starting uh in April. So we will have softball for girls, not ages nine to twelve years old, and it will be from April seventh through June eleventh. And then we'll have T-ball, and that will be from April fifth to June eleventh for five to six-year-olds, and that is coed. Um, one of our major programming um initiatives is our contract class program. And we're now open for the spring classes. And if anybody's interested, they can visit reservations dot L A county dot gov. And we have hundreds of classes on there for people to register for, uh both in person and virtual as well. Uh, we are also offering our summer applications, which are now open for returning instructors, as well as new instructors that would like to teach for the summer. Uh, so if you're interested in in signing up to be an instructor, you can visit our L A County web Parks and Recreation website. So go to visit parks dot L A county dot gov to access that information. Uh, and you'll be able to register as an instructor with L A County Parks Recreation. So we're always looking to have exciting new classes and currently have several at Loma Alta and at Farnsworth Park. So uh come out and uh join us. And if you have questions, you can reach out to me. Um, and or call the park and get more information regarding uh becoming an instructor with L A County. Some of our other initiatives, um as we mentioned, uh it's Women's History Month. So actually, at Loma Alta, they are doing a wonderful activity with the Everybody Plays Program. So on March seventeenth, from two thirty to five thirty, they have ballin' like women in history. It's a youth basketball sports clinic for ages seven to seventeen. And then on the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first, they will be also having the same program for girls to come into our gym and to play and train and uh get high-level basketball training um for um the month of March. So it's an exciting time. We've had girls come into the gym and taken part in this uh wonderful program that the staff are offering over at Loma Alta Park. Um, some of the other um activities and programming that we're offering with L A County is our uh and our initiative is reprogramming. So as I mentioned, we have our Everybody Plays After School Drop-In Program. We have our sports clinics, our snack and lunch program. Uh, upcoming during the summer, we will have our Parks After Dark, as well as our swimming program, and then our year-round teen programs. So there are some of our free offerings that we have, and they vary in times and they vary in um location. However, our department is very uh um strong in offering these free programs for the community. So like I said, we're offering after-school, sports clinics, snack, lunch, Parks After Dark, uh free swimming and teen programming. Um, and then, as I said, this summer, we're offering our Parks After Dark. So we're excited to bring that back as well. And we'll have more information in the coming months as to the information about what's gonna be offered during that program. And we'll be also offering of our summer camp at Loma Alta Park. It's a free uh STEAM program. So that is exciting that we're actually gonna be able to offer that free for the uh residents of Altadena. Uh, space will be limited, and the program actually does open this Friday for enrollment. So um it's exciting that we'll be able to offer this high-level program for uh for free. Um, normally, this program is very costly, but thanks to um the Fifth District, we were able to offer it free to the community. Um, and then some of our other initiatives we're offering uh for communities to sign, our community groups to sign up is our core community partnership, uh as well as our school M O A uh and reservations. So our core and community partnerships allows uh nonprofits to partner with L A County to offer special events at L A County. Um, we've had many events at Loma Alta, Charles White, and Farnsworth. So it's a great opportunity to, for the community to partner with L A County Parks Recreation. School MOAs, we also are partnering with schools that want to hold activities, special events, and uh school events uh on our site. So if schools are interested, they can also um register to become a partner through our M O A process and reservations. Our reservations office has been taking um reservations it over the last uh year, and will be taking indoor reservations um very soon. And you can visit uh parks dot L A county dot gov to access the information on all of our park programs and activities, as well as our reservation uh activities as well. And that's all I have.
That was a lot. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there more? Um, any questions? Comments? I don't see any. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, all right. Um, we're gonna move on to um Chamber of Commerce, Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, to my fellow council members, uh it's again my privilege to report to you on behalf of the Altadena Chamber of Commerce. And uh for those that may not not know what the chamber is supposed to do, what we do is we try to support all of our local businesses, Pasadena, Altadena, and the surrounding areas. So we have some pretty cool events coming up uh during this calendar year. So it's my privilege to share a few of those with you this evening. Since March is Women's History Month, we are focusing on women in science and the importance of community outreach. Our speaker will be Joyce Lynn Ferguson. She's the Chief Development Officer at Huntington Medical Research Institute. This will be a virtual event, and it's on March the thirty-first from ten to eleven. And we certainly invite each and every one of you to be there with us if you can. And then in May, let us not forget that the Altadena Chamber of Commerce will finally host its annual awards and installation dinners on May twentieth from six P M to nine P M at the Altadena, at our wonderful Altadena Town and Country Club. We hope that all of you will join us. Join in with us and join in with the community as we honor our Citizen of the Year, Deb Hoberstadt, and the Business of the Year, the Altadena Farmers Market. As you can see, we are presenting events that are designed to meet the needs of our community. And we look forward to seeing all of you there with us. For more information, you can visit our website at W W W dot Altadena Chamber dot org. So in closing, I'd like to thank all of our council members uh for their dedicated service to the community. Uh, thank you for listening, and Madam Chair, thank you for your time. It's back to you.
Thank you for that report. Okay, we're gonna move on to our commu- community committee reports. And we're gonna start with Safe Streets, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Uh, so just uh to introduce everybody, back in twenty twenty-two, and uh the Safe Streets Committee was actually started, I think, in twenty eighteen. And we did an amazing program called the Community Pedestrian Bicycling Safety Training uh with uh collaborative um efforts. Uh, and one of our partners was California Walks. So in February of this year, we started resuming our virtual or meetings. We used to meet in person. Um, uh, and so we basically um had Cal Walks come back and reintroduce their programs uh that support. So again, community pedestrian bicycling safety training. We did a safe routes to school uh assessment, a community assessment in partnership, again with community and services, uh which led to some good traffic safety improvements at that point. So anyway, they're back and um they're willing to help us with uh different things like community assessments and walk audits uh and a variety of things. So they attended our meeting as well. Uh, that was kind of that. And then we uh started prioritizing um future projects or ideas or thinking. So if anybody wants to get involved, come to our next meeting, which will be March twenty-fourth. Uh, we will be having an uh meeting or a overview from Berkeley Safe Trek on street stories. So Street Stories is in a community engagement tool that allows residents, community groups, and agencies uh to collect qualitative information. This is not data, but it's community data um about transportation um and uh traffic safety in the community. So that's the long, short story. Uh, so learn about Street Story at our meeting in March. And then Metro Micro in April will be giving an update uh on their Metro Micro um status and everything they've gone through in this first year. It's still a dollar to use Metro Micro, and uh that service again has been the most popular um micro transit pilot uh in all of L A County. So learn more about that. And then uh as it relates to the digital divide, Metro is actually offering these workshops that I can share information if anyone's interested. It's called Move on Seniors, and it teaches uh seniors how to use apps um and all that sort of stuff to book a variety of trips. Um, that's it. Sorry.
Story. Thank you. Thank you. I use my grandkids to teach me all that. Yeah. But okay, so now we're gonna move on to Land Use.
Yes, the Land Use um Committee met two weeks ago, and we did um have a presentation on a small cell site um at the Lincoln Avenue Water Company property. Uh, so that if everybody, um it, I want everybody to be aware of that, and that we will be probably looking at it again in the beginning of April at the meeting. Um, it was just a presentation. We did not take any action on it. Um, the other thing I wanted to um just let everybody know is that the next Owen Brown um gravesite meeting is on April fourteenth at ten A M. Those meetings are always at ten A M. on the second Tuesday, Thursday, sorry, Thursday um of the month. And the committee recently um put a directional sign up uh nearby the um, you know, on the way up to the uh little round top because the, apparently, people were not knowing, like they get up there, but they couldn't really know where to go to see the gravesite. So there's a very rustic sort of nice, but rustic sign up there now that says go that way. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Markison. Okay, we're gonna move on to general public comment. I know that Jennifer Lee is here for one with her public comment.
You want me to start?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for having me here. I'm Jennifer Hall Lee, and I'm a P U S D School Board Trustee. And I'm here to let you know about two things. One, the Pasadena Unified School District at Webster Elementary, which is an Altadena school, is gonna be opening their new Armenian World Language Program. And you may have gotten this in the mail. You may have not. I'm gonna bring a stack to Dorothy Wong. Um, it is in addition to our slate of dual-language programs in the district, Mandarin, French, and Spanish. And when children go to Webster, they will be moving on to Blair Middle School and High School for that Armenian um language program. So the second thing is um just as exciting. We, we're in our fifth year in the P U S D for the Women's History Month Assembly. And this Women's History Month Assembly focuses on the women's liberation movement. And this year, our keynote is Hillary Rodham Clinton.
Oh.
Yay. And this is gonna be a little bit different this year. She has given us a keynote that is pre-recorded and personal for the students in the P U S D. And so we'll be playing that. And who is introducing her is Congressmember Judy Chu, who has been a very good friend to the P U S D. And we will have Pasadena City Councilmember Felicia Williams. And we have a video by L A County Supervisor Catherine Barter. And we have also speaking at the assembly, we have Altadena Town Councilmember Dr. Sandra E. Thomas. And we are so excited to have all of these fantastic people. And it's on March twenty-third. It will be at Marshall Fundamental, and it will be livestreamed. I will be sending this also um digitally to Dorothy for everyone to have. And you can come to the um event and meet people, or you can watch it livestreamed. And um those are my announcements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for keeping us informed. I'll, I'm gonna make sure I, I'm there for women's appreciation. Yes, thank you. Okay, I wanna hear Dr. Thomas. So, okay, um, I'm going to Sophia Conches. I think she's the one from um the city of Pasadena. Sophia?
Maybe not. Hello, my colleague Robert Bennett will will actually be speaking about the program.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair Jones. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it. My name is Robert Bennett, and I'm here with my colleague Sophia Conches. We're thrilled to be speaking to you. We represent the L A County Lead Free Homes Program in Pasadena and Altadena. Right now, I'm just gonna introduce the program to y'all, but we're gonna be doing a presentation next week so you can get some more information about everything. Just to set the context a little bit, through the course of this campaign over the past couple of months, in the Pasadena region, one hundred percent of the homes that we have tested have tested positive for lead paint. Across the entire L A County region, only two homes have not tested positive for lead. So we have a very big problem in our community of lead paint being in homes that have So we have a very big problem in our community of lead paint being in homes that have children in them. And that's what this program is taking a look at. The process is very straightforward. They submit an application. An inspector will reach out to the person if they qualify for the campaign. There are three qualifying factors. Number one is if a pregnant woman lives at the home. Number two is if a child under the age of six lives at the home. And number three is if a child under the age of six comes and visits the property. Those qualify the person for a free lead paint test and a free lead paint removal service that is paid for by Los Angeles County. So it is free of cost to certain Altadena residents. Like I said, it's perfectly free. Applications for the Altadena area will open up on April first. We will be doing door-to-door knocking and door-to-door outreach with community members. And we also appreciate the outreach help and partnerships that we've already forged in Altadena. I would like to thank the Altadena Sheriff Station for putting our information up on their, on their pages online. The District Library of Altadena, thank you and for inviting us to the Second Saturday Concert. It was a great time. To the Christmas Tree Land Association, thank you so much for making sure to put us in your meetings and helping us get the word out. I'll speak more about the whole program so you guys can have a better sense of it next week. But I don't wanna take up too much of your time. But the next best thing that y'all are able to do, my coworker Sophia, she put in the chat the, the website address that any homeowners can go to. It's very easy. They just type their address in and it'll tell them if they qualify or not. Now, if you are dispersing this information, please make sure you tell people that the applications only open on the first week of April. We don't want anybody to freak out that their application, that they're, they're not accepted, when they actually will be qualified in just a week. So I hope that that provides enough information. I don't wanna take up too much of everybody's time. It's a really great program. I'm sure you all are aware of the historic value of the homes in our community and how young a lot of the families here are. So it's very important that we're protecting these children and protecting young mothers from any sort of lead paint exposure. I know we all feel very similar about that. So thank you, Chair Jones, for taking the time to let us speak. If anyone has any questions, you're more than able to put them in the chat.
Yeah, Diane has a question. And I'm glad you mentioned the April date, because I had two residents apply and they called and said, they told us we, we don't qualify. But it's because it's not open yet. Okay.
I, I just have a quick question. So free lead testing, free lead removal, lead paint removal, but then you have to repaint your house, right?
They do the repainting.
Yes, they do the repainting. And even beyond that, they'll actually go and re-texture the house. So if you have stucco, they'll re-texture it so it looks like the stucco. Contractors will do original paint matching, so they'll match the color paint that the people have already. We understand that the historic value of homes is very important to people and it is to us as members of the city. So we wanna put everything exactly the same way that it was, just with a little bit of a facelift and the peace of mind of knowing there's no lead paint in the home.
Yeah, I, I just have a quick question, too. There's, there are a lot of paint painter, you know, companies that do not do proper lead removal when they're repainting the outside of a house. Is that something that you're looking at as well? Because then the paint goes down into the ground, right? I mean, the lead.
Yes. So that's a great point, Diane. And yes, we do do ground soil testing as well around the property. So it's a multi-pronged approach that we take. We have a chemical sensor. And then we also do ground testing. And then we also have the physical ability to just take off a paint chip and just test it. And a point I would like to emphasize is if these repairs are extensive and the family needs to be relocated, L.A. County will pay for a hotel room or rooms for that family to stay in while these repairs are happening. And we will compensate any meals that the family takes on. We're treating this very, very seriously. It's a very dangerous problem that a lot of people just really aren't aware of. And that's why we've been given the funds and the authorization to go into these communities and have these face-to-face conversations. So people are made aware of the danger. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. That's great.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll send out Sophia's email address because she will deliver flyers to your door.
Oh, good. Chair Jones, I just have a, I just have a really quick question.
Who's that?
This Madeline.
Madeline.
Really quick question about the lead paint. I just wanted to know, is there a particular timeframe that you're finding that houses were built that are more likely to contain lead?
That's a very good question. I don't think that I mentioned it, but it is important to note that this program is only available to homes that were built before nineteen fifty-one. Also, it's a common misconception that repainting the home deals with the issue or remodeling deals with the issue. It really doesn't. The lead paint can still be there. So if you have friends who have a home that was built before nineteen fifty-one, but they say, oh, I've repainted, you can say, that doesn't really mean too much. You should still get this lead paint test done. And if there is no lead paint on the property, we write them a L.A. County certified letter that states there's no lead paint on the property. So it increases their home's value because they have that city certification. Does that answer your question?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Chair Jones.
You're welcome. Okay, and we were, we allowed questions, but usually we don't during public comment, but I thought it was important that we get that information out there and get it correct. Okay. All right, thank you. Any more, anything else? We're gonna move on. If not.
We have another public comment.
Okay.
So we wanna introduce Mercedes Ramos. Senior. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mercedes Ramos. I'm a senior at Avising Global Leadership Academy in Altadena. It's a Chinese school that specializes in math and personalized learning. Last Saturday, we had a retro sale and we raised a thousand dollars for our Ryder Passes trip. And this Friday, we are gonna also be having a movie night for the Ryder Passes trip to Costa Rica. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you pass that information along to Dorothy so she can put it on our website? Dorothy? Okay. All right. I see Ann Hickon Bottom from Assembly Member Chris Holden's office. She usually has something interesting to tell us.
Well, listening, I have two takeaways that I'm gonna follow up on from today's meeting. And talking about the digital divide gap and the catalytic converters. With respect to catalytic converters, there is several pieces of legislation that are pending in the Assembly to address the issue of the theft of catalytic converters. Of course, just because it's legislation is introduced doesn't mean it ultimately get passed. But I'm, I'm willing to, I can like send you the information. You can put it on the website as to what those bills are. And there's a public website where individuals can track the legislation. It's geared toward things like instructing those who purchase those junkyards, metal, recycle, et cetera, would be required to check for an etching to confirm that and not to purchase anything that doesn't have an etching. And with respect to the digital divide, Mr. Hollis mentioned some CPUC grant information. And I can make that available, too, as well. You can send me an email. Everybody knows where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Okay. Any more public comment? Dorothy? Councilmember Wong? I'm trying to be professional.
Yes, I did not receive any other public comments. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to our Census Track reports. And we're gonna start with forty-six oh one.
Good evening again. I just wanted to take an opportunity to provide an update on the Mount Lowe Drive median re-landscaping project. This project has been underway since it was funded in two thousand nineteen. And final plans were presented in early two thousand twenty-one. Phase one of the project is currently under construction around the median. And this is up in Census Track forty-six oh one. It's Mount Lowe Drive and I got Maiden Lane. And it's a very large median in the center of circle of homes. They're installing a native plant meadow of low-lying plants and grasses, an oak woodland using existing trees, a pathway system throughout the median, connecting it to the trail access point at Maiden Lane, and adding bio swales to control water runoff. The project is on time and will continue through late spring into early summer. Once completed, the median, which is currently fenced off, will reopen to the public. So it's quite, it's going to be quite a beautiful place for residents in Altadena to walk.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to forty-six oh three point oh one.
Hi, thank you. So I just wanted to make one announcement. S C E will be doing a pole replacement project that also includes cover conductor. Do you guys know what that is? So basically, that is insulated wiring and it's going to have to go across part of the canyon. So as a result, Canyon Crest Road will be closed to car traffic on March twenty-third from eight thirty A.M. to six thirty P.M. L.A. County Fire will actually be on the west side of the closure in case there are any emergencies. There is an emergency evacuated road, but residents have been informed as much as possible. So we're announcing it here as well. And then if you're planning on visiting your friend or going hiking, Canyon Crest is closed. If you must pass through, you can walk or bike around, but that can slow down the project. So this project is gonna be run by Edison Cruise. So pretty much the entire Monrovia District is gonna be doing this pole replacement and covered conductor wire replacement. So if you have any questions and you see these signs on the road, that's why. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving right along to forty-six ten.
Good evening, everybody. So the building at two four three nine Lincoln Avenue, right there at Lincoln and Figaroa. It has been approved by L.A. Planning as a four-story building, not five, but four. The developer affirmed housing, as we know, has been instructed by L.A. County to reach out to the community with the details, but as of yet, they have not done so. So we're looking forward to talking to them and looking forward to hearing how we're gonna move forward. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Forty-six eleven?
Good evening, everyone. Last but not least, I'll make this very brief. We have new crosswalks in our Census Track forty-six eleven. So in addition to the relocation of the crossing guards at Elliott and Altadena Magnet School, the crosswalks on Calaveras have been repainted. So thanks to Vice Chair Nat for her tenacity working with the Dr. Shekel, who is the principal at both schools, Public Works and Alan and I and the community to improve the safety of our streets. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? Any unfinished business?
Motion to adjourn is unfinished.
Okay, I'm about to say that.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. We are adjourned at eight forty-one.
Forty-seven.